And you like it, just as another express statement of this part of the thing to put in.
As the next situation out there, there was an easement.
I remember, yeah. Yeah, if we lay it in at the same time, so that this easement is for drainage and, and you add those other things, that's where we can get into an issue. But expressly, it's only the drainage easement. They not only don't have the ability, I don't know of any of them based on recent experience, that will even do it. They don't want to get in the middle of that drainage without express permission to lay their line in it, because then they're always at risk, causing a problem with the drainage or any other kind of damage. And then they end up having to come back, revisit it, take it all out, or do something different. So they're pretty particular.
But I guess my thoughts on that, do we make it obvious within this, or just rely on what we already have?
I would say it probably doesn't hurt to have things that are obviously, and stand out, and it's very easy to cite, you know, a code number. I do know some of the issues we have with some flats, you know, older flats in the city, is that they combine drainage and utility easements into the same 20-foot parcel, not give up any more land or increase lot sizes. And that really constrains us, because we have to let the utilities come in, obviously, for the houses, but they're almost always laying in what was engineered to be a drainage easement behind the rural housing. But I think having a very plain language prohibition against, you know, going into drainage is probably in our interest.
If it's in there, we can adhere to it, if there needs to be a hurry, excuse me, Brandon. So, do we want to spend another week making these modifications, or ask for approval tonight based on these modifications being completed?
That's up to your comfort level. You'd like to see it in its absolute final form, that change right back. So I'd like it. It's my general preference, it's just a matter of, you know, I like what they explained. I don't think we have any common screen.
Yeah. So, I guess we'll ask for a motion to table this, and I'll make a motion to table ordinance 1300 until the next city council meeting. Got the motion on second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by council member Farmer to table ordinance number 1300 until the next city council meeting, seconded by council member Class.
There's the official motion on second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries, we will table that item until the next meeting. That brings us to number two, consideration of amended ambulance service agreement with the city of Sedgwick. I believe we changed a little bit of language in that, but not much. He's going to bring us up to four on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has noted in the memo for the agenda item, basically, the city of Cedric requested some additional language in the non-compete sections, which are 2B and 5D. Those remain highlighted in the agreement that's in your packet. Basically, they wanted to have that enshrined, that Halsted would not consider a breach of contract or a competition, should Sedgwick, as they've indicated, begin preparing, you know, to take over this, their service at the end of this contract, you know, in three years, they obviously will have to ramp up by, by equipment, probably hire personnel before that January 1 date. They were concerned with that reading, as we had originally proposed it, that we could take that to mean that they were competing with us. So, as I noted, this isn't anything that substantially alters the agreement, or gets away from, I think, what our intent was. You know, I assured them that was not anything we would hold in breach of contract, but they felt better with the language being added. So, since it did change from what was originally approved and authorized to be signed by the mayor, it's back before you for final approval, hopefully, as they approve it, and then we can get signatures and get this done.
Any questions, council?
I'd make a motion to approve the ambulance service agreement as amended, with the city of Sedgwick with a specified term of three years and authorization for Mayor Travis to sign the document.
George Forrest, second. And we will go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by council member Wallace to approve the ambulance service agreement as amended with the city of Cedric for the specified term of three years and authorization for Mayor Travis to sign the document, seconded by council member Torres.
Okay, council, there it is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. That will move our agenda into new business, and the first item there is discussion of dissolution of Halsted Rec Commission.
Ethan? Thank you. As councilor, remember, last year, we kind of began to approach this topic. The Halsted Recreation Commission is established via our code and ordinance. It's a related, yet treated as a separate taxing entity, the city of Halsted serves as the taxing authority for it, but then we turn all that tax money to it, they're currently limited to two mills. Basically, the city has, you know, the rec director is actually considered a city staff person fully under the authority of the city manager. Our administrative staff performs all the functions as far as, you know, doing the accounting for the rec commission. That, so basically, we're keeping two accounts, even though we're pretty much running everything out of the same office. With the changing tax bills that we're seeing regarding municipal budgets, we're able, via the tax lift, to bring in the rec commission's tax levy, and just put that as a function of the general fund. It's very common in cities, you know, especially those cities that have the rec commissions under the city, and still have parks and recreation. It'll still very much function, it just cleans it up, makes it easier, it'll actually save us some money on the audit, because they're all going to be looking at one set of state books. But obviously, this is a change, it's going to require an ordinance, where I can walk you a little bit more through it, but we need to get this done before preparing a budget, because we'll need to send all the dissolution documents with our budgets this year to prove that the Halsted Recreation Commission is no longer a separate entity. And that allows us to absorb that function and take that over in our budget, as far as the city of Halsted proper. I guess if there's any questions, I will try and answer it, but we're just looking for consensus that that is still the way that you all would like to see this go, so we can get that ready for next week.
I believe this is something that the rec commission has actually approached the city on, and has encouraged it, is it possible?
Uh, yeah, the rec commission's understanding was that they were operating already as an advisory board. And so this would actually put it in there, and we will do what Halsted's done. And currently, our tree board is set up as a subsidiary committee of the Parks and Recreation, you know, commission. This would basically turn it into a joint Parks, Recreation, and Tree Advisory Board, so we have to rewrite our tree ordinance too, so we can comply with the ARBA date, that we don't want to lose our Tree City status. So, beginning with Brad, at first, it was a simple ordinance, and then I was like, no, we actually need three, because we're going to be rolling some separate entities into one, and we need to establish how those terms work in the appointments. But the benefit to that is we do, or I found that we're struggling to find volunteers to fill these committees, so reducing that number of committees, but still having those functions preserved, and they do very much go hand in hand. Our rec director is also our tree board liaison, so it simplifies it to him too, if he knows to just go with this one advisory board to fulfill all this. You know, there's no anticipation of loss of service or anything, everything will just become a function of the city's general fund, instead of right now, where we, you know, decide certain things are recreation commission expenses versus city expenses, so.
I agree, it should change. Sounds like you have a consensus to move forward, Mr. Mayor. So you'll be coming back with those ordinance changes, right, Ethan?
Do you want?
So you'll be coming back at a future meeting with those ordinance changes? So you don't need anything else on that particular item tonight?
No.
So we'll move on to number two in this discussion of 204 main. Maybe Ethan wants to start off on this one, if you'd like me to, I can.
That's the same, yeah, you go ahead. I think everyone hopefully is very aware.
204, as the councils, where some of us requested to go into that building and have a look at it. The first time I went into, councilman Torres and I went in and had a look, and surprisingly, I think the building was in better shape than what I originally thought it would be. That's not to say I don't have a share of problems. Then I was back there again this Saturday with a stone mason to get a look at the front facade, and councilman Farmer joined in. And probably what I'm going to do is let George from San Bus speak to what they saw, and then ask the rest of you councilmen to chime in with your thoughts on it as well.
Well, going through there, you noticed two things, or made note of two things as we're walking through, that my concern is also about moisture, water infiltration getting into the basement and underground underneath the footings. And it appears that the floor, both floors are pretty nice and level, so I don't see a lot of movement from, from post to post, supporting various joists, I don't see a lot of movement there. That carried on upstairs to the main second level, so that floor, that deck seemed to be very, very solid. I was really surprised structurally how solid the floors were. And of course, we don't know that that roof is an issue, so. I was surprised to see how solid both floors were, I don't know what's. And I was expecting to see quite a bit more water damage on other components of the building. That brick, that stone facade and that parapet, of course, you know, need to be fixed, so.
I actually saw the same thing and several other things, I don't like the way the, you refer to roof, I'm going to refer to roofs.
Yeah.
As multiples. The one roof, the way the tuber cords are set up there, can't help but put outward pressure on the exterior walls. If you go out to the north, look up at that building, you can see where the plaster looks like it started to separate, and that's probably caused by pressure being exerted there.
Lateral.
Yeah, downward pressure. I don't know, I see a lot of problems with it. I think, my opinion, I think we need to go out there and probably do the roof, as far as the front of the building. What we were discussing, otherwise maybe a temporary, well, not a temporary, but the base structure of the front be repaired. We'll make the decision what we want to do up in front of the building on a later date. But I've got to do this realtor and a lot of bit of funding just on that roof repair once they get into.
Well, I think that roof, it has, it all has to come off, so that all you see is blue sky, and that thing needs to be framed from the west, and draining all one direction to the east. Right now, there's, as Sam said, there's two roofs. The old original roof, it actually frames north and south, and there's a ridge line, and so it's pushing water to the adjacent buildings, but that's taking care of another issue. But I think all that roof needs to come off and just rebuild it and drain it all one direction to the south, would be the easiest thing to do.
The structure, the existing roof is weak.
Oh, yeah, it needs to go away.
Weak.
It needs to go away.
Yeah, and that, and draining it east and west would take the load off, the parallel would load off the side walls too.
Absolutely.
But if we fix the roof and we go in and we do a structure in front of the building, that can be ripped, stone, you know, whatever, later date, but number, number one, that facade needs to get off the roof. Looking, going out there and looking at it, I think, I think we, I really think we should barricade that side. That's scary, you've got a separation of, what, eight to 10 inches? And we're going to sit there and we can look at it and say, well, it looks like it should hold, or whatever does it. There's a lot of forces being exerted in the, in the raptors, and the raptors are already going out towards the street. So I think that's the immediate thing that needs to happen, is get that barricaded, so we're not in a liableous situation and.
Of course, it belongs to us now.
Yes.
It belongs to us, so.
We need to get the stones.
It's off with us.
I wouldn't want to be the guy taking the stones down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Scary. Anyway. I think the next step forward is to get absolute this, on getting the stone removed, getting the structural wall up in the front of the building, and get the roof repaired, get all those costs, all the gather, hard actual costs. And I would say while you're at it, we need to contact the salvage company of sorts, to clean the inside of that building out, get all that junk out of there. Get that floor swept up, because, you know, right now, with that roof being open up there in the top, where rainwater's coming in, it's soaking all that ceiling tile and stuff that's laying on the floor, that's going to create a big problem. It's already a big problem, yes. But we need to talk to a company about just going in there and tearing out all the rest of that ceiling tile and getting all the junk all down there. And I think that would be something we probably ought to get done. The thing is, I don't care how you slice it, to salvage that building, I think you're going to have more money in it than the building is ever going to worth. Does seem to be the consensus around the community to try to salvage it, I think that's going to come at a cost. We're going to have to start looking at these numbers and decide if that is the best way to go. I think we just have to do the roof, that will be the decision to go forward.
Judging from the preliminary pricing we got, yeah, I mean, once you sink the money into it to repair the roof, I would say we'd be committed to doing the rest of it.
Absolutely.
As a viable, it's one of the risks to your other.
And I don't think that roof repair is simple, I think all that stuff, all the wall breaking needs to be removed. Setting engineer trusses, put back on, rededect and rubber roof, and what I mean, it'll be good for a long time. But that's going to come at a substantial cost. I think the existing tubular walls that are out there, it's, you just build the problem down.
Probably in the roof? I think that's just going to create more issues for whoever's out there doing work. Yeah, I already thought I would do it, if I just made some sketches together. And what I have in mind would be the most economical, most straightforward, structurally simplest thing to do is I'll post some sketches together and.
You're talking about the ceiling joists that are there?
Yeah.
I think they should stay, I think we can put an engineer truss on top of that, and leave those ceiling joists there. Let's see if they're all options, let's see. You got this whole dimension lumber, it's well seasoned.
Well, what I'm thinking, if somebody ever goes in there and buys that or leases it in the city, if they go to finish off that second story, I would imagine seeing a grid ceiling such as this put in, hang, which would get you to hang off the bottom of the trusses. That would get all that other old garbage out of there, all your heat and air's got a good place to go, a good place to run.
My thoughts are that old native lumber that's up there now for ceiling noise, that's a pretty good tie on those big rock walls, but.
Yeah, that's true.
I think if you take those out, you might have opened that other channel.
Yeah. Awesome, like, I don't. I'm open.
Anybody else have any comments on 204 main? I got some homework there, Ethan. Continue working on that problem and move on to the next item, which should be done. We need to set a date for a city council work session. Ethan, did you have a range of dates in mind?
Uh, just judging, even though it is also the week of a regular reading, the week of June 22nd, which gives us adequate amount of time to prepare work and finish up our pre-work budget, because that will be one item that is on the work session agenda. So anything that would work in that week for the council, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th.
26th is no good, any other time, I'm good. We ended late, Wilson, Matt, afternoon.
I'm good. My date was Thursday also, I was still trying to figure it out, maybe we heard best.
What time would you do it for 24th? What time would you make it in?
Uh, whatever fits in the council, it's early, it's 5:30, and two stories in the center, so.
Well, you know, I've got Hart County, you can see that, Ethan, too.
So probably, no earlier than six.
The neighbors issue works two days a week. So.
But I can be, they're on.
I can move stuff around for the 23rd.
No. If, if you're working through that, I'm just leaving, I'm just going over there.
So. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, so you.
Yeah, Mayor Travis and I have a meeting, we're supposed to move it to 24th.
24, 6, 4. We're making that work even. Yep, in D.C., I mean, that'll give us two hours without any D.C. meeting.
Yeah, they should. Need a motion to set that date and time?
I'll make a motion to set city council work session for the week of June 26th, well, on the 24th, sorry. Based on, forget that motion, make a motion to set the city council work session for June 24th at 6:00 P.M. Make a motion to set the city council work session for June twenty fourth at six P M.
And we'll go to Jamie for the review on that.
Better be the back exactly where he said.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to set the city council work session for June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty at six P M, seconded by Councilmember Farmer.
Okay, there's the official motion and second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries unanimously and we'll work session, that's good. So, next item on the agenda is executive sessions. I believe we have one and Mr. Torres is going to make that motion.
This is where I move that Halsted City Council recessed into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss a potential acquisition of real estate. First went to preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property exception, K S A seventy five, forty three, nineteen, B six. And asked, uh, in addition to governing body, following persons join governing body in executive session, city manager and city attorney, uh, to reconvene at seven fifty. Second.
And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to move the Halsted City Council into recess into an executive session for twenty minutes to discuss potential acquisition of real estate pursuant to the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property exception, K S A seventy five, forty three, nineteen, B six. And this asks that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, city manager and city attorney with the open meeting and the governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at seven fifty P M, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
Okay, council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. We'll be moving to executive session and are we going to move into this first conference right now? And we're back. Is there any action to be taken as a result of our executive session? Seeing nothing happening on the floor, I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda and that is reports. Start with the governing body and tonight I'll start with you, Denise.
I have nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sam? I want nothing. Michael?
Nothing.
George?
No, sir.
Well, I don't really have anything myself other than say it's getting on out. Tried to negotiate for air level and get air conditioning for the whole city, but it didn't seem feasible. Deal with that yet. We'll, we'll move on to the, uh, report section from the manager. Ethan, that's you.
Mayor, council, this weekend will be several city, city activities that are sponsored by the city of Halsted. Saturday is the date for citywide cleanup, shred day, and we will also have our annual rabies clinic. A reminder that items for citywide cleanup must be curtsied by seven a.m. on Saturday morning and that nicely will not pick up yard debris or limbs. The shred truck will be, uh, in Halsted from nine a.m. to noon and that will be located in front of the Halsted Bank's main location as they're a co-sponsor of that shred truck. And then the rabies clinic will be held at city hall this year in our lobby in Whir area and not the fire EMS, fire EMS station as was previously done. So we just want everyone to know of that new location. City is seeing more interest in registering golf carts and unanticipated development and getting some of the needed paperwork from the county has developed. But we will have an updated policy in place starting tomorrow to address this. A reminder that the Halsted Police Department will not inspect the vehicles until all paperwork and requirements such as a slow-moving vehicle tag are present on the cart and that the fees are not appropriated. Public Works has been working on meter reading, helping Parks and Recreation with preparation of the pool, mowing of the levee, road grading, uh, leaving limb pickup these past few weeks. They also managed to find time to do, uh, first round of mosquito spray. Uh, Public Works has also begun working on some of the meter pits in anticipation of the upcoming upgrade to the Zener A and I system. And Zener has communicated that they should begin their process the week of June twenty second. Uh, Zener will be starting with the installation of the collectors and repeaters before, uh, we move on to the actual meter hardware itself. And we have annual water tower maintenance scheduled for June thirtieth, um, as long as conditions permit and we could be okay from Michigan. Halsted Parks and Recreation have begun summer softball and baseball, um, albeit there are a few changes in fewer participants than normal. I know the area rec directors have worked hard to make this happen and be mindful of various guidelines to help reduce the chance of COVID nineteen spread. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that's been put in by many rec directors to, to have summer baseball and softball. Excuse me. The Halsted swimming pool will be open on, uh, June fifteenth. The person's residing in the U S D four forty school district. Monday and Tuesday will see swimming blocks that require reservations and allow a limited number of total swimmers, uh, to stay within guidelines and, I should look on Facebook. Or contact city hall will give you the number to call for those reservations. Uh, as long as Harvard County moves into the phase out, uh, section of their plan on June seventeenth, then the pool will transition to a more traditional operation. Uh, but if we remain in phase three, then we will continue to use the swimming blocks to adhere to those guidelines until we move on to the next phase. I just wanted to again thank our pool management team and Grant for their work in getting a plan put together, including various contingencies so the community has the benefit of the pool being open. Uh, Wedgewood continues to see elevated play and even hosted its first official tournament this past weekend. Uh, they are now recording ninety-eight members, which is higher than the previous high, that we have a number to the rec, uh, which was eighty-six members in two thousand and twelve. Uh, finishing work continues on the clubhouse project and hopefully that project will be finalized and completely closed out in the near future. And city staff continue working on budget preparation and will be meeting with departments this week and preparing for the council work session for preliminary discussions on our twenty twenty one budget. And that is all I have with the matter.
All right, well, I'll just let you move on to the financial portion of your report.
All right, so you have your handouts there. As you can see, um, on our cash balance, uh, we do, um, see more red than we like and we are, we are down compared to our cash position in, uh, two thousand and nineteen at this time. Uh, the general fund obviously is the largest portion of this. Um, and the large factor driving this is our investment income, uh, has fallen substantially. Uh, we will probably collect fifteen to twenty percent max of what we budgeted for, uh, if the current rates hold through the end of the year. Uh, so that is a substantial hit. Uh, the good news is, is property tax, um, and sales tax so far have, have not been significantly decreased. Um, and, and they're holding steady or about where we expect. So, uh, maybe some silver lining, but of course we have a few more months before we know if that's true or not. We continue to see a decline in the gas fund, um, that was due to our warmer winter. We just didn't sell as much gas as we normally view. So revenues and investment expenditures are lower than what we saw in the previous year. Uh, bond and interest is showing a slightly larger decrease in cash from the prior year. And then part of that is because the additional sales tax money we collected from, uh, that we get from the county did not come in until after the close of May. Uh, so June will actually see a, a higher increase, but that is just a timing issue. And then wastewater fund also continues to show decrease due to a lower cash carryover for twenty twenty than we had in twenty nineteen. And then we also have the ongoing wastewater retrieval plant evaluation project, which is of course an expenditure that is not normally seen in most water operations. Other than that, you can see our capital plan there, um, on the next page. Continue to have steady balances in those. Uh, you will notice that the road improvement project line has decreased as we paid for that street ceiling project that was done. Um, and that did transfer quite a bit out of there because we were paying a portion of what was authorized in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. And then, uh, as we finish up the accounting on the police canine project, uh, you will see those numbers in the equipment fund, uh, go back into, so. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but even though there's a lot of red, it's not bad. We're still in very good position that, that, those numbers are just a comparison to where we were last year. So, um, if you anticipate that with a lot of red, we'll, we'll probably see some clicks to our reserve contingency and that's up there as well.
It's probably added to the, uh, increase in, what needs to be expanded by red rims and red fences.
Oh, really? Yes.
Okay, thank you for your report, Ethan. Need to get this room back under control. That finishes our agenda for this evening, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Jamie, would you like to review that one?
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-nine P M, seconded by Councilmember Kloss.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. You are adjourned, thank you, council.